Good morning and welcome. I'd ask you all to please stand while we have Pastor Justin Coffey from the Front Line Church lead us in invocation. And then, James, if you would lead us in the approach allegiance to the flag, sir. Esther?
If you would bow your heads. Father God, we thank you that government matters to you, that you have placed each man and woman in this room on purpose because you love and care for all the people in our city. We ask today that they would be filled with the wisdom and the character required to administrate justice and equity to the poor, needy, marginalized, and racially oppressed, as well as the innovators, business leaders, entrepreneurs, civic leaders, and homeowners, that they would be led by you with a deep love for the people that they serve, and that when there is division on the issue at hand today, they would be unified in their resolve to serve and care for the needs of those not present, that they represent. Holy Spirit, fill this place and guide and direct their steps. We trust you. Ask all this in the name of our Lord and King Jesus. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Calling the meeting order, we have two appointments from the office of the mayor. Motion second. Any discussion? Please cast your votes. And it's so done. Next on our agenda is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings from May 19th and 26th, and to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings from May 5th and 12th. Motion second. Any discussion? Please cast your votes. Request for uncontestant continuances, Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Vice Mayor, starting today, we have some on page 20, under item 9F1. Page 20, 9F1B, 2900 North Harvey Parkway, we ask that that be stricken. Do we need to re-notify? Then moving to page 21, under item 9G1. Item F, 2304 North Everest Avenue, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item I, 2137 North Lottie, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item O, 3034 Northwest 19th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item U, 101 Southwest 43rd Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item W, 1521 Southeast 45th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And item BB, 2805 Southeast 56th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And then moving on to page 22, under item 9H1. Item F, 2304 North Everest Avenue, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item G, 2900 North Harvey, we ask that that be stricken. Do we need to re-notify? Item N, 2137 North Lottie, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item Y, 101 Southwest 43rd Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item AA, 1521 Southeast 45th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And finally, AF, 2805 Southeast 56th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured.
Thank you, sir. Next on our agenda, we have a series of revocable permits. The first is a revocable permit for Class and Ten Pen Neighborhood. Is there anyone here from Class and Ten Pen? If you would give us your name and address, and then tell us a little bit about your event.
Okay. Kayla Lewis, 1312 North Blackwelder, 73106. The Third Annual Class and Ten Pen Community Festival will be June 13th from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. There'll be live music, food trucks, and lots of family-friendly activities in the neighborhood.
Thank you very much.
Great. I want to also introduce Kayla in another role. She's been appointed the Director of the Plaza District. We're very happy to have you here, Kayla. Congratulations.[375.41][375.41](Laughter) I move approval of the permit.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Please cast your votes. And you're good to go. Next on the agenda is the Downtown Oklahoma City Incorporated request to Rock the Boat. Anybody from the -- there we go.
I think we skipped one. Hi, morning. I'm Mallory O'Neil. I'm with Downtown Oklahoma City Incorporated, and we are requesting to close Oklahoma Avenue for Rock -- for our Third Annual Rock the Boat Event between Wanda Jackson Way and Flaming Lips Alley for a family-friendly festival in Bricktown this Saturday.
Very good. That's in Ward 7. John is not here.
I would move approval.
We have motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Please cast your votes. And it's so done. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
And now we'll go back one that I missed, the OU Corporate Challenge with the University of Oklahoma to hold their event. Thank you, sir.
Good morning. My name's Paul Sund. I'm the Director of Communications for the OU Physicians Group. Live at 555 Northwest 38th Street in Oklahoma City. The Corporate Challenge is a three-day event that we hold every year where we get teams of business employees to compete in a variety of different athletic activities. One of the key events is the 5 and 10K that's held on the OU HSC campus and near the state Capitol. We're requesting a permit to run the 5 and 10K. This is our 27th year and would appreciate consideration from the council.
Thank you, sir. It's a great event. Motion is second. Any discussion? Please cast your votes, and you're good to go. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next up, the Historic Film District.
Hello. My name's Julie Oslin. I'm with Dunlap Coddington Law Firm in the Film District, and I am here for -- we are putting on or we're hosting the Film Row Frollick, which is part of the Dead Center Film Festival. And this year, we're adding a family-friendly aspect, so make sure to bring your kids out. It's June 12th, and we'd like to close the streets, 700 block of North Sheridan only. Food trucks, games for the kids, bounce houses, all sorts of stuff.
Thank you.
Really busy weekend in Oklahoma City.
Very busy.
I would move approval.
Please cast your votes.
Thank you very much.
And you're ready to go.
I hope I see you there.
Thank you. Next up, the Oklahoma Baptist Home for Children to Hold Miles for Smiles.
Good morning. I'm Scott Conrad, 16301 Southwestern Oklahoma City. And this is our 15th annual bike ride. We have four routes, but we're not closing any streets. It's family-friendly, and so it's June 20th, Saturday, and it's usually from 7:00 till about 2:00. We usually have between 400 to 500 riders.
Excellent. Ward 4 and Ward 5, Pete. Motion is second, and you're approved to go.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And next is the OKC Fest 2015 Rock Fest.
My name is Jeff Ewing. I'm the President of Prodigal, 615 North Hudson. This is Darren Ransley. We're here today on behalf of OKC Fest. Remember last year, that was a festival, it was in June, that featured Lady Annabelum. And Dirks Bentley drew over 20,000 folks in the downtown area. This year, we're scheduled for June 26th and 27th. We've got a great lineup. Graham Colton, Drive-by Truckers, Better Nezra, Grace Potter, Sammy Hagar and the Circle will be our Friday lineup. And then we have Corey Kent White, Lucas Hoag, Claire Dunn, Hank Williams Jr., and Rascal Flatts will close us out on Saturday night. A few additions for this year. We're increasing our footprint a little bit, adding food trucks, an artist trailer area, and enhanced lighting and video presence, really to continue to elevate OKC Fest as we continue to grow this year over year. I want to thank the City Planning Review and Special Events Staff. They've been fantastic. And John Graham and Major Brian Jennings from OKCPD. Just great folks to work with in planning for this festival. We're requesting a revocable permit for 623 to 630, closing Harvey from Reno to Southwest Third, and closing Southwest Second from Hudson to Ron Newark. And a floating revocable permit controlled by OKCPD on the 26th and 27th for Reno from Hudson to Ron Newark.
Wonderful addition to all of the great things happening downtown.
Thank you.
Sounds like a fabulous lineup. Move approval.
Motion is second. Please cast your votes. Good luck. Thank you very much for coming down. Time to recess the council meeting and convene is the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, and we have seven items. Motion is second. Any discussion?
I'm just going to make a quick comment.
Go ahead, sir.
Most of the many of these are 2007 bond-issue projects where, in previous years, we had funded the -- the MFA had funded the architectural work so that we could move forward when the bonds were sold. And so it's nice to see the cycle on these now moving over to the city for completion of the bond-issue projects.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other discussion? Please cast your votes. It's so done. Let's adjourn the OC-MFA and convene is the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, six Motion is second. Any discussion? Please cast your votes. Let's adjourn the OCPPA and convene is the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, and we have three items. Motion is second. Any discussion?
Do want to note that we're putting out the request for proposals for the collection services for solid waste, as Marsha outlined in her report a couple of weeks ago to council.
Someone had -- from Capitol Hill had indicated. Not here?
Not this one.
Okay. All right. Please cast your votes. And it is so done. Adjourn the OCPPA, convene is the -- I mean, adjourn the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust and reconvene the council with a consent docket. Motion is second to receive it with -- approve it with individual considerations. Are there any individual considerations?
AK and AL.
AK and AF?
AL.
Mr. Vice Mayor, we do have two presentations this morning on AP and AQ.
Okay. Any others? Let's start with Dr. Shadid.
Brent, can I just ask you about these two TIF allocations? The first is a general record. This is one of our largest TIF allocations, almost $5 million. I've read through the report. Is it -- or is it the same amount of money? It's just the difference is that they were unable to get historic tax credits?
All that we've done here is we've amended the contract to adjust the timing of when the TIF goes into the project. The amount of money of TIF stays the same. It's just a matter of timing, of when the TIF money will go into the project. And we had to adjust it as a result of their inability to get historic tax credits and new markets tax credits for the project.
The bulk of the money is going for the parking garage. Can you talk for a second about what -- how that's going to be constructed and?
We anticipate construction on the parking garage will begin about after they've completed at least 30% of the property of the commercial space. At that time, the private developer will begin the process of getting additional leases. And once they have a comfortable point on that, they'll continue to invest their money along with private loans, and then the TIF money will come in at that time. It's around 400 spaces. But other than that, I don't know any of the details essential related to, I think, what you're trying to ask. What do you actually?
Well, tell me about the parking garage. Where is it in relation to?
Oh, it's across the street when the former -- at the former Y was located.
So it's just a standalone, above-ground parking garage?
Yes.
And it's about 409 stalls?
That's what they're anticipating, yes.
And the total cost is about $3 million?
The total cost of the project is around $5 million, I believe, for the parking garage. And I think it's even -- I think it's around $7 million, and we're funding $3 million of that.
Okay. So three of the $7 million for the parking garage we're funding?
Yes.
Okay.
Brent, could I also ask a question? Is it not the case that there's an additional -- because there was no allocation of new markets tax credits and historic credits didn't work, isn't there an additional $5 million or so of equity?
Yeah, there's additional $5.5 million that the developer will be putting in equity into the project to make it work.
You know, we always talk about the but-for provisions of TIF, and I will tell you that this is one that truly falls into that category. I think they all do, but this one clearly does. The -- this is one of the harder projects that we've ever done. This may make the curve look easy. We've had the building--
Saying something.
What's that?
That's saying something.
It is, but it's true. We've had, I don't know how many fall starts on this building. It's upside down financially. It's a marginal building, but it needs to be, you know. It's a building that has to be saved, and because of the emotional ties with the memorial and the other issues. But it's a very -- it's a very challenging project to get on its feet, and it would not be redeveloped without TIF.
So it fits the but-for criterion? Is it more the $1.75 million for the redevelopment, or the $3 million for the parking garage? Or what helps us get over?
Well, they can't do the -- they can't lease out the building without parking. And so it's a combination of both. Because nobody's going to build an office with building -- or have an office building downtown where they don't have any access to building, and there's very limited -- you'd think there's a lot of surface lots up there, but there really aren't, and there isn't that much parking up between Fifth and Sixth Street and along Robinson.
So everyone's comfortable, I guess, then, and it would be consistent with council policy to use TIF funds to fund a parking garage to help bring back to life and get over the hump of preserving a historic building?
We've always gone toward parking, if we can, on all of our TIF projects. A lot of the housing projects and such, that's one of the challenges of building in the downtown area, is the structured parking that's not -- it is required, and oftentimes downtown is not required out in the suburbs. So that's where we focused a lot of our TIF dollars over the years.
What would be some other examples of parking?
Oh, it was the parking in the level. It was the parking over here at Legacy Art Central. I think we focused toward the parking up on the edge. I think there's multiple, multiple times where we've done parking.
And we're looking at?
Tenth and Robinson.
And we're looking at potentially, well, we're at least studying, using TIF funds for parking garages as part of the Clayco development?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Does that do you right? Do you have?
Well, I guess the second one, Brent's the criterion one. I mean, it would -- just talked, it's 550,000. What -- some of that's for an alleyway, I think, and some of it's for?
Yes, on the criterion, there's -- it's 550 is the total allocation that the council approved a couple of months ago. On this, in this agreement, 200,000 of that will go in the form to support the redevelopment of the alleyway behind the property. And then the balance of that would provided to the developer on an installment basis as they pay incremental increase in taxes. A portion of that taxes will be provided back to them because there -- when we looked at their returns, their returns were rather low, and we were trying to -- as we were evaluating their financials and their performance. And so that's how we came up with that amount. And this is, under this approach, doesn't require us to borrow any funds. We just, as they pay it in, we will basically provide it back to them on a percentage basis.
And do you think this meets the but-for criteria?
Yes. One thing that happened with this project is when they went to downtown design, they added about $1 million worth of additional improvements to the building, and they came back and asked for that. And as our committee evaluated it, we came back and recommended $350,000 to help that.
Let me ask you one more question on the -- going back to the parking garage. The total cost is about $7 million?
I believe that's the case, yes, sir.
If it was $7 million and 409 spots, that'd be about $17,000 a stall. Do you think that's high, medium, low?
That's rather low for a parking structure. A lot of structures are more than that. But again, is it poured in place? What type of structure? I know some people can come in and do another approach, and it seems to be a little more efficient.
I think the one across the street was in 22,000 parking spot or something. 23, something like that. Oh, there's more than that? How much was it, Brent?
I want to say it was closer to $28,000, $29,000 space.
Okay. All right. Thank you. How many stories is this parking garage?
I don't think we know yet.
I'll have to get back with you on that. I really don't know.
It hasn't been designed?
But no, but on that small -- on that small, I don't know. I would guess four and five, but that's just a guess.
Okay.
Because right now, in the footprint, there's 100 spaces on the existing footprint of that parking space, of that parking lot where it's going to be located. So four or five is probably where it will--
Six, maybe, yeah.
And none of it goes underground? It's all surface?
No, sir.
Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman.
We do have two presentations. The first one is on the Senior Wellness Center that's about to go out to bid. We have Phil Elwell here from GSB to give us a presentation.
I'm Phil Elwell, Principal with Glover Smith Bodie Architects, GSB. I brought with me Haven Manken, architect that'll help us kind of go through the presentation a little bit of what -- where we are currently on the senior center. It's great to have arrived, you know, at an important milestone in the project. We have gone through the planning and the final plan and specification presentation preparation for the first MAPS Senior Center, Wellness Center, and are ready to go out to bid. We've certainly dealt through a lot of different issues with the project, but it's been very successful and certainly has been very rewarding as far as what we feel like is the results of the project. Excuse me a second. Do I need to push? Oh, okay. There we go. Sorry. As I said, there's a lot of planning that has gone forward on the project. A lot of people have been involved as far as the programming. These are some of the highlights, some of the ideas, and some of the areas of programming that have been developed over time, certainly with the involvement of the design consultant, the maps, programmers, and certainly the operator with the Healthy Living Center. They've helped refine basically all of these functions and have come to a consensus and have been able to put these all into one building very successfully. There's a lot of issues as far as trying to deal with, you know, operators' intent to address the all aspects of health. You know, the final program included spaces devoted to the physical health, mental health, and social health, as are involved in all these items here. The overall site is located to the north of Northwest 112th and Rockwell. It's basically on the northeast corner of the site currently occupied by the Putnam City Baptist Church. The city is currently completing purchasing of the property, and I understand that's probably going to happen sometime today on that. The site itself has two entrances, basically one that feeds straight off of Rockwell, and the other one actually feeds over into the parking lot of the Putnam City Baptist Church. This maintains some kind of direct connection with Rockwell as far as getting to the senior center. There we go. Floor plan, let me let Haven, he's the project architect on the project, and let him kind of describe a little bit of some of the things that are in this thing.
Thank you, Phil. Again, my name is Haven Manken. I'm a senior associate at GSB and have worked on this project. We've got a balance in our floor plan from all the stakeholders that participated in the project and the planning. And we've married this floor plan with constraints with the site and the budget, other utilities, pipelines along Rockwell, and so on and so forth. As you can see in the floor plan, the kind of light purple areas are activity spaces. There's a full-size basketball court with walking path around the court. There's a large fitness center with exercise equipment inside. There's an aerobic studio with a cushioned floor for dance and aerobic exercise. There's a hybrid fitness pool that has steps and a ramp and a lift, so anybody will be able to take advantage of this pool. It's three feet to six feet deep, excuse me. And you -- the kind of light yellow or ochre color is the corridor, if you will, the spine, a kind of L shape that allows circulation through the building. Does this have a pointer on it, Tom? Okay. The entrance at the bottom of the plan, excuse me, is a vestibule that comes straight off of Portico Share that faces south on the building. People would come into this main entrance. As you come in, there's a control point right to the left. A welcoming person will be there at all times to welcome people into the facility. There's a small café to the right as you come in that serves prepackaged some foods or salads or sandwiches and that sort of thing, some drinks, coffee. Nothing is cooked there. There's a lounge with tables and soft seating, and a library to the north with windows to an outdoor landscaped area. The light green areas are assembly spaces for people to use. There's assembly rooms for various purposes. There's arts and crafts room with a kiln off to the side, and so a lot of activities are planned for these assembly spaces. The pinkish area are restrooms, support, there's locker rooms, showers, and so on. Oops, went the wrong way, sorry. This is a view of the building from the southeast corner from Rockwell looking northwest. And so the Portico Share where the white car is is on the south side. That's the main entry to the building. The window area, that's kind of a large structure to the right side of this photo, is the library that looks out into the landscape area of the project. As you walk in the building, that main lobby, the control desk is to, in the foreground to the left in this photo. The café is back and to the right side. You can kind of see it there. The lounge with a soft seating and tables and chairs. And then on beyond in this photo where the glass is, is the library. There's an assembly space with glass to the left where you see the couple walking. This is another lounge space that's to the south side of the building. This is an area that's just outside the main restrooms, which you can kind of see drinking fountains on the right side of the picture. The glass area straight to the back in this photo is the fitness center with all the exercise equipment. The glass wall to the left side of the photograph looks into the full-size gymnasium. This picture shows the hybrid fitness pool. It's about 80 to mid-80 degree temperature water. We're looking at the ramp that goes down into the pool there in the front part of the photo. There is windows that look out to the landscaped area on the west. There's stripes or lanes for lap swimming. The depth is three to six feet deep. The depth is three to six feet deep.
Is that saltwater?
I don't believe so. I think that we have a pool equipment room that's on the backside of the west side of the building, and I don't believe that it's saltwater. Yeah, I didn't think so.
Project budget is 8.6 million. Right now, what is projected with the estimate based on what we have produced in the drawings right now is sitting right about the 8.6 number, as you can see from the numbers there. That is what we are projecting at this point, and we feel like it's favorable and realistic at this, at this point, based on what we have presented. As an alternative, we have actually looked at alternative, we've actually worked in eight alternates for various types of upgrades, and if there's more money available or if we get a really low bid, and they have the opportunity to add more of these enhancements, these are some of the alternates that could be picked up. Some of them are related to upgrading finishes, upgrading finishes that would be more durable, these types of items. So they don't necessarily need to be taken in this order, but that is kind of the order of maybe the preference of the operator at this point. So you can see by these eight, some of them have to do with lighting efficiency, you know, things like that that could be added. So we're looking forward to kind of seeing where the market falls on these kind of items here. As far as the schedule goes, with your approval today, we anticipate going forward with bid opening sometime in late June, starting construction late summer, and hopefully have the facility open by fall of 2016. That is our plan at this point. So if I'll, if any other questions you may have, I'll be glad to answer those.
On the pool again, it's heated, the pool's heated.
Yes, sir.
Was there a discussion about saltwater versus chlorine, or in the maintenance costs and the health of the?
I'm not aware of a discussion. We have an aquatics consultant that's been working all along on the project, and I'm not sure of the discussion on that, sir.
Okay.
I feel confident that it's been considered.
But it wasn't chosen? I'm just wondering, is that based on cost, or?
I'm unable to answer that question.
I would say basically that would be kind of a maintenance issue. Saltwater is something a little bit more difficult to work with.
Right. As was mentioned, their consultant is a consultant that does these pools in many, many places, and I would assume that they've come up with the best idea based on history and reasons that they have. Your consultant did, does lots of stuff in Dallas area, I recall.
Yes, sir.
Many, many of the senior wellness centers, in fact, he's the reason why that we were able to get away from two pools. We have this one combination pool, and that is a trend that they've, they've set.
Can you do me a favor?
I would say this, I attended a homeowners association meeting the other night where this project was discussed at length, and the consultant, that's all they do all over the United States, and the detail on safety is incredible, I will tell you that, such as, for example, and you all can help me out with this, the curbless, no curbs because curbs present a lot of problems for elderly people, and the detail on not only physical health, but mental and emotional health that the consultant looks at with the project. And I was impressed with that.
Well, David, if you, just for future projects, if you could look specifically at saltwater and the health effects of, I mean, what's an elderly population of, you know, the chlorine can be toxic, especially those with pulmonary issues. Just see if you can figure out from the consultant if there are health issues.
Yeah, I absolutely will, I'll get that to you.
Thanks.
I'd like to add on that note, we, lifespan design helped us quite a bit on this project to deal with those kinds of issues, lighting levels, acoustics, all kinds of things that dealt with elderly populations. So we definitely have that foremost in our design. Yes, sir.
That's all.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
We had another report.
We do have another report. Jacobs is here, Doug Smith is here to go over the preliminary report on the, on the modern streetcar.
I also have with me today Mark Dorn with AECOM, so we'll be sharing the talk today. So to update you on the streetcar project, we're at a level of preliminary design on the mainline track, and that's the item that we have before you today. The other components of the project are, of course, the vehicles, and I'll give you an update on that at the end, and then also the maintenance facility there at Seventh and Hudson. So we're going to focus today on the approval of the preliminary report for the mainline. So to start out, the report significance is basically that we're going to set the design criteria that we'll use for the final preparation of the bid documents, and so that'll detail out, you know, things like curb radiuses and track type, and all that detail is in there. It also locks the horizontal alignment. That's very important to us because it allows us to start the right-of-way process where we have a corner clip and we need to acquire some private right-of-way, or, and we need to start the geotech boring process, find out what kind of soils we're dealing with. We need to start rail procurement, so we have the rail here when we're ready to start the mainline construction, which hopefully would occur in 2016, and start our utility potholing for those utilities that we can't see, like the water lines and some of the private utilities, we need to actually core down and figure out how deep they are, and also to confirm the rail location, where the rail is going to be in the running lane of traffic. It also gives us a check of the cost budget at the 30% design level, and also authorizes us to proceed with the final design. So the contents of the report, which you would find in there, I mentioned the design criteria, there's a stop map that shows where we recommend the 22 stops be placed in general terms. There's a concept of what the stop would look like. There's a structural evaluation of the canal bridge in Bricktown to confirm that the weight loading is okay on that. There's a discussion about the traction power substations. Right now, we're recommending six for the mainline part of the project, and so it explains how those would be located in general. There's a discussion on the overhead contact system, which is the catenary wire that runs over the vehicle and on the wired portions of the project, and there are some off-wire portions, but it explains how that would be configured and examples of that. There's a utility inventory, both on the public and private side, so we have an idea of how that affects our costs. There's an analysis of the traffic, so we understand the movements of the vehicle through the intersections and any modifications we need to make to the signals, such as adding a transit-only phase to the signal. There's an ADA inventory, so we've looked at the ramps, at the intersections, and any improvements we need to make there. I mentioned rights-of-way for both the traction power substations and the corner clips, and of course, there is a cost estimate update. The key issues in the document are, as I mentioned, we're going to lock the route horizontally, so we know where we're going, confirm the stop map, the 22-stop locations. We recommend considerations of turnbacks, one at Fourth Street and one at Sixth Street and Midtown, as an option to the bid, and so we recommend that we study that a little further. There's an update on the minimum-maximum off-wire configuration in there. Mark's going to tell you about that more in a minute. It also confirms the traffic management approach that we would use, for example, how we configure Broadway, 10th Street, some of these areas, we work through that, and then, and as I mentioned, there's a review of the cost information at this point. So that I'll turn it over to Mark, and he'll go over the stop map and stop locations with you.
I'm Mark Dorn, I'm with AECOM, and I'm a subconsultant to Jacobs Engineering, I'm leading the design team. So as Doug mentioned, we've set the alignment, and this mostly means we've selected which lane of traffic the tracks will be, the streetcar will be running. We will be, in final design, will be refining the track, you know, within inches or so, just to see if we can avoid some potential conflicts with utilities, to reduce costs, to reduce construction impacts and whatnot. Doug mentioned the stops, there's 22 stops on the mainline, and there's a 23rd stop that we're building as part of the EK Gaylord and the transportation intermodal hub. We're working with Automobile Alley to refine one of the stop locations at Eighth and Broadway, as well as the Transportation Subcommittee has asked us to revisit the stop that's located currently on 11th and Hudson. We may consider shifting that over to 11th and Walker. Next slide. Thanks. Doug mentioned the turnbacks, these, this is where a streetcar would come out of service and reverse directions, to put it simply. We're looking at, this is a, is not a critical function to the operation of the Phase One alignment. It will become more useful as the system expands, but it is a very nice option to have for the operator for embark, once the system is up and running. And so, it's not currently in the budget, so we're studying where that turnback may want to be and whether we can afford it. Next slide. So, and this is just one consideration at Fourth and Robinson, where the blue line you see is the actual turnback from the eastbound track to the southbound on Robinson. The peach line you see there is the future Phase Two coming in from the Health Center. So this is just one example of one location we'll be looking at. We'll be looking at Sixth Street and possibly Fifth Street as a turnback. Next slide. So, you know, we'll be looking at all different criteria with costs certainly, but how it may affect the street and how it'd be configured, and just the physical feasibility of it. And ideally, we will set this up to be an add alternate in the bid package, so if all goes well and the bids come in and we can exercise this option to add a turnback, which would be a nice thing to have. The off-wire, this slide shows our absolute, we called the absolute minimum off-wire segment, which is shown in the blue dashed. It's the, it's the bridges at Sheridan and Reno. The entrance into Bricktown is really driving that technology for the, to have the hybrid battery-operated streetcar. So this is, so we are now currently studying how we can get the most return from that investment, because there is a premium on the vehicle cost in order to have that hybrid technology. Go ahead. So we're analyzing how much we can expand it. And so when we do this, we'll look at increments of stop to stop, because we want that, when the pantograph is the piece of equipment that reaches up and touches the wire to draw the power, that pantograph will go up and down, and we want to minimize the number of times that does that operation per run, because we want to make it as simple as possible for the operations and the operator to ensure a safe service. We'll, we want to make sure there is an extra dwelling time at the ends of the line in order to recapture the charge for the vehicle. And so we've, but it's all really up to the vehicle manufacturer, and so we've given them our information on the profiles of the street and the length of the potential segments. Maybe we can go to the next slide. We've had an estimation of what we think could be the maximum extent of a wireless segment, but they are now analyzing what is the actual capabilities of their batteries, and we want to make sure their batteries have a reasonable lifecycle length and make sure they perform and provide a comfortable service, you know, provide air conditioning and the, and as well as the runtime that we're expecting for the streetcar service. So we expect that feedback from the manufacturer in the next couple of weeks. And this is just a picture of an existing system in Portland. We understand that the wires are, are some, there's some concerns about the wires and if, whether there would be a visual impact. You know, our commitment is to make sure that there is unobtrusive as possible, so. And then we also conduct with the, with the alignment, setting the alignment in the traffic lanes, as Doug mentioned, there are some considerations with the turns and some of the traffic impacts. So we've studied the whole alignment, and just the most notable findings we found from the traffic analysis is that the overall net transportation network will work just fine. We did confirm that we will have two, we'll maintain two eastbound lanes on 10th Street, and there will also be two westbound lanes on 10th Street as there is today, but it does, with all the development that's planned, there would remain the option to provide on-street parking along the west side, and then developers on the east, on the south side, I'm sorry, on the north side. And on the south side, developers would, would have the option to provide pullouts, because the tracks will be right up against that curb. And then on Broadway, we've, our design proposes to maintain two southbound lanes and the angled parking on the west side of the street, but then converting the east side of the street to have two northbound lanes and changing the on-street parking back to a more traditional parallel, parallel parking arrangement. I think that's it.
All right. So we took all of this information that we developed in the preliminary report and did a cost estimate on it, and what we found out is that essentially, we're on track with the project. Now, if you look at the column there that says currently approved budget, that is the, those are the line items in the total budget that the city council has authorized, so you can see they add to the 128.8 million approximately. And what we're doing is, as we're going through these various milestones in the project, we're updating those budgets, and so we can continue to show you how we're tracking. So the current status, you can see as of 30% semittals, is adding up to the 127.3 million or so, and there's some additional breakdown of the current status in the breakdown column. And then you can see the variance column shows those individual line items and how they're tracking against the currently approved budget. Current status we're showing you is that we are under budget, but this is a continually changing picture. That's why we have to track it so carefully, lots of moving parts, and so we have to understand how everything is morphing as it goes forward. So the good news is, we are showing a current under status, under-budget status, but we have to continue to watch that very carefully, and we believe that we're on, we're on schedule and on track to deliver the functionality of the project for the budget that's been assigned to it. So that's really the message we want to say. And really, some of the things that we'll be looking at as we go forward, there are some, some potential deducts that we know could occur and some potential additions that occur. So it's an example of this balancing act. Potential deducts include our overhead wire in the Hudson, South Hudson going to the maintenance facility. We have lots of combined effort to work out there, because there's a road project in Hudson, there's a park project, and so some of the streetlight poles could combine with the overhead wire poles, and that could represent cost savings to both projects. So those are potential deducts. And then we have, as Mark mentioned, the maximum off-wire situation. We budgeted for more of a minimum off-wire, which gives us the most amount of overhead wire, so if we're able to reduce, because of the battery capability we confirm, we'll get a reduction in costs there in our OCS. We might also get a reduction in the number of traction power substations for similar reasons. And then private utilities, we have a pretty significant $2 million budget for private utilities relocations such as AT&amp;T and so on, and we're working almost on a weekly basis to confirm how much that's going to cost, and so we believe at this point that budget's looking good, so we're hoping for a reduction there. And then we could do other things like our Bricktown terminal, we can make some modifications there if we need to. So, again, we're trying to keep these aces in the hole in case we need to trim back, and that's just an example of what we're doing. Potential additions, Mark mentioned the turnbacks, if we add that, if we start combining poles to reduce the amount of street clutter, because we're adding an overhead wire pole five or 10 feet from an existing streetlight, we may try to combine that, but we haven't budgeted for that at this point. And then, of course, the public utilities relocations are always a risk item, and so we have to keep a careful eye on that. We're working carefully with the Water Utilities Trust and Water and Sewer and so on on what we're going to do with relocations. So the message here is really, we're going to continue to diligently evaluate the costs as we move towards a 60% design level. So to wrap it up, our next steps are, we have to work carefully with Nicon on this off-wire configuration. It's very important that we get that answer soon. I mentioned the combined pole decisions regarding streetlights and so on. We have to finalize the traffic preemption priorities, so we work through the new traffic signals. We have to get the potholing going, we have to get the We have to get the potholing going, we have to get the geotech going, we have to work through the utilities coordination, we're already meeting on a regular basis with AT&amp;T and OG&E and Veolia and so on. We have to get the rail procurement package started. We'll start working on a special questionnaire for vidders, because we plan to pre-qualify the mainline contractor, so we have a short list when we actually go to bid. And of course, our 60% design drawing package, we're going to get to work on that. Other items, just to update you briefly on what's going on in the vehicle, we're continuing to be in negotiations with Inicon about getting to a final contract for the building of the vehicles, and as we already discussed, the whole discussion about the battery, charge and discharge information, we're working on. The storage and maintenance facility is reaching the preliminary report level, and we hope to be bringing that forward to the subcommittee and the board and city council soon, and ideally, maybe later this month and early July, is what we're hoping for there. We're doing some value engineering on the facility, that one's very tight on the budget, and we're trying to do some right sizing and get that thing as close to the line item budget we've had assigned for that as we possibly can. On the operations side, Embark is working on several fronts. They're working on determining the fare method, they're working on operations plan, and then finally, there's a very important safety and security management plan that has to be worked through, and so Embark and MAPS are working together on all of those functions so that as we work through design, we have the ultimate operational goals in mind as it all fits together. So, that's all we have for you today, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Has there been any discussion about the impact of, on ridership if the convention center is not served by the line?
It's really more of a question for the convention center group than this group, but the fact that-
No, but I'm asking, you know, in the financial projections, there's ridership numbers, and I'm just asking if there's-
It has been discussed, you know, with the development areas that we have for the convention center, we're within a block or two blocks maximum on those. There's one that is right on it, and I can show you that after the meeting. I think that it's close enough that people will still use the streetcar because of where it's going, and it's, it will be an easy way to get right into Bricktown with a short walk.
Is there, is there discussion about the potential cost of bringing it to the convention center, or is this route and the convention, you know, in the past, all the discussion was they're tied together?
Right, and we hope to still maintain the integrity of that. One thing that the populace group is looking at is, is that, is it something that we do a little spur maybe, or dip it down, or have a car that just serves the convention center? There's opportunities for that. So, that's still on our minds, we understand that it's important, and we're still investigating that.
I'd just like to see if there have been some actual numbers. Not that I don't trust your estimations, David, but, you know, at the rate of subsidy that this, this project is going to incur, even if it works perfectly, the idea that it might reduce ridership by three or four or five percent would, could really be dramatic. I mean, we're already estimating that we're going to subsidize it at the rate of $10 per rider. It seems to me that it would be important to know if there is a difference. There may not be, there may not be. I'm not, I'm not even saying there is, but it seems to me that if it's as far as two blocks away, it could well impact ridership some, because the two-block deal was, was the maximum number, as I remember going through this process, the two-block thing was as far away as you could expect to track riders from. So if you're out on the edge of that, rather than right in front of you, it seems to me that's a number worth knowing at least.
Right, and as I said, that's, that's the next step that the populace group will be looking at is those issues along with the utilities.
You might just put that on your list of other things you need to do.
I will.
Okay.
I had a question, this might be for David too, about the Inicon negotiation. Is it taking longer than normal, or is this about-
Well, I've never personally done it, so I don't know what normal is, but-
It seems like to me it's taken a while, but I'm not involved in it.
It's going well, and we just recently received comments back from them, and we're meeting on that tomorrow, I believe, with the municipal counselor to go over that contract and their comments. We expect that to wrap up in the next 60 days or so, so I feel like we're moving well on that.
Okay, thanks.
And just maybe a question about a little bit of operating dollars as we're working through, and maybe this is for David as well, or for the manager, but is Embark looking at advertising opportunities and some of those areas-
Sponsorship opportunities.
Additional revenues and things?
Yes.
Yes, good. Thank you.
Mark had a question for you. Day-to-day impact, traffic impact, I'm still unclear on that, and can you use Broadway as an example? And I'm unclear, lane selection, has that occurred or not occurred?
It has occurred.
Okay. So walk me through the number of stops on Broadway, where that lane will be, and when one of the, when one of the cars stops, what impact will that have on traffic? Will traffic stop?
So the, let's see here, there's several factors, but, let's see, when the, the streetcar turns from 4th onto Broadway, you'll, we want to make sure that's a safe movement, and so the intersection of 4th and Broadway will go all red, so there'll be, and then the streetcar operator will have its own signal saying it's safe to proceed, and then they'll, they'll make that maneuver. As you proceed north on Broadway, our proposed design now changes the configuration of the striping on Broadway, so now we have two northbound travel lanes. Right now, there's just one with the angled parking. We, our recommendation is to convert that angled parking, because of that blind backup presents a, you know, significant safety concern with a streetcar operating immediately adjacent to it. And so that, so we're converting that to parallel, and that allows for us enough room to add a second northbound travel lane. And so, the streetcar will be in the, in the rightmost travel lane, adjacent to the parking, and proceeding northbound and at-
When you say rightmost, you're talking about on the east side, correct?
On the east side.
Okay, I'm with you, I'm with you.
So if, you envision now two travel lanes, it'll be the one on the east side, closer to the curb.
So there'll be a lane heading north and a lane heading south that will not be impacted by stops of the streetcar, correct?
Correct. Exactly. And so, when, and then when a streetcar stops, we are building our stop platform in that parking zone, so the streetcar will stop in the lane, and any car behind the streetcar will have to stop. But you'll have the northbound, the second northbound lane immediately adjacent, and what typically happens is cars, when they're behind, much like when you see a bus, you know, you're anticipating the bus is going to stop, or the streetcar's going to stop, and cars will generally shift lanes and be able to proceed.
Thank you.
I have, I have one more question. How many sheltered stops, how many stops will be sheltered on this, just the number of them?
By that, I mean if you're, if it's raining, you don't have to get wet to ride the streetcar.
Yeah, each, each platform, I believe, is, are programmed for a, to have a shelter. I don't think there's, sometimes if there's like a building canopy immediately adjacent, we rely on that, but I think each stop, we're planning on a shelter.
And that's how many?
Twenty-three, 22 on the mainline.
Jason's here. Jason, would, could you come up and let me ask you a question in that regard? How many, how many shelters do we have for people that are transit-dependent?
I'm going to guess around, I need to get those numbers. I know we've just are installing 31 additional.
I'm not going to hold you to it, I just want some ballpark.
So let's say between 50 and 60, and I can get you the exact number. And 31 of those have just been recent installations or installations in progress.
That's close, thank you.
Actually, right now, the only stop that might not, that will likely not have a shelter is number 23, which is right in front of the intermodal center, because once that becomes part of the expanded system, then we'll be adding a shelter there.
I know we talked about this in the past, but I don't think we talked about it today. What is the frequency of the stops, or has that been determined yet? Well, like, how often is a streetcar going to stop any-
Oh, the frequency of the streetcars? I think there are 10 minutes between streetcars, but each stop, it will be dependent if there's a request made. It, that's part of the operations plan that's being worked out. There's a policy of, you could have the streetcar stops at every stop mandatory, but typically, and I believe we're planning for this, if, much like a bus, that the stop is upon request. And so if there's someone waiting at the stop, the operator will stop, or if there's someone inside, they'll pull the cord in order to request-
Okay, well, how often will a streetcar pass a stop? Is it, you say 10 minutes?
Yeah, yeah, I think the headways are 10 minutes.
With four trains in operation, and so we're buying five, and we'll have a spare, with four trains in operation, the 10-minute headways, 10-minute frequency is possible.
That's the word I wasn't-
And that's what the operations plan, its goal is to maintain that. There will be variations, but the goal is 10.
Okay.
I think if you extrapolate what Pete and James are asking, the, a conclusion is that we could be building a system in which you have the greatest discrepancy in level of service in terms of frequency, protection of the riders, services for the riders, between bus and streetcar service of any city in America.
Any further comments or questions from council? Seeing none, thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation. You have heard the items with special consideration on the consent docket. We have a motion and a second. Any further questions? Please cast your votes, and the consent docket is approved. Next is the concurrence docket.
Move the item subject to individual consideration.
We have a motion and a second to approve the concurrence docket with individual consideration. Are there any individual considerations from council?
Is David still here? David, could I ask one quick question on the MAPS for Kids? Item 8K is a rejection of a bid related to John Rex Playground.
Right.
I just wasn't, um-
It was over budget.
Was it over budget? Okay.
And we're redesigning that, and we'll have that back out soon.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other items for individual consideration? Seeing none, please cast your votes, and the concurrence docket is approved. Items requiring separate votes. First is a zoning case in Ward 3. Is the applicant present? This was approved by the Planning Commission for a dog installation out in the area of the outlet malls. There was no protest, it was 100%. Is there anybody here to speak? That's in Ward 3, my ward, I move for approval. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, please cast your votes, and it is approved. Next item is PUD 1580, Ward 8.
This is from Ward 8, the applicant is present. There is, this is an ordinance for final hearing. There were no protest letters, there were no protests at PC. The Planning Commission and the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval, and I would move for approval of the item.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Please cast your votes, and it is approved. Thank you, sir. Ordinance and final hearing involves CE 904, closing a portion of a 10-foot platted utility easement in Ward 3. Has anybody signed up? There were no objections at Planning Commission. I move for approval, and it is approved. Item C is a public hearing, confirming and adopting the assessment role for the Oklahoma City Improvement and Special Services Assessment District Number 5. Is Gypsy Velasco here? She had signed up to speak, but I believe she visited with staff. So we have no one to speak on this item.
We'd be happy to answer any questions.
We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes, and it's so approved. And next is the assessment role, also in Ward 4. Motion is second, and it is approved. Ordinance for final hearing, establishing a 90-degree angle parking. This was approved by the Planning Commission also. Does anybody speak on that? It's in Ward 3, I move for approval. Any discussion? Please cast your votes, and it is approved. Next is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone to speak in any item under dilapidated structures? Seeing none? Motion is second, and is approved. Item G, public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Anyone sign up to speak? Anyone here wishing to speak on unsecured structures? We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes, and it is so done. Next item is a public hearing regarding abandoned buildings. Anyone here to speak on any item under abandoned buildings? We have a motion? Second. Please cast your votes, and it is so approved. Next item is a resolution relating to incurrence of indebtedness by the trustees and Emergency Medical Service Authority. Mr. Williamson is here to speak to this and give us a little briefing. Steve, if you would, please, sir.
Good morning. Good morning. This is for the Tulsa facility. It was built in 1988. We had at that time planned on having ambulance growth, but not to the magnitude we've had after all these years. It was based on 24 ambulances, we have over 50 now, and we're adding a two-story attachment that will handle medical supply, medical cleaning, and the second floor will be paramedic EMT education. That's because of the volume of the time, area it takes for such, for both functions. It's 16,000 square feet, and we anticipate the cost to be around 5 and 1/4 million.
Any questions?
Is it, do you have other bonds, do you have other indebtedness?
No, we don't.
And the maximum term of this would be 11 years?
Yes.
What would, what would happen if the beneficiaries decided to opt out of EMT in future years, and that EMT was to dissolve?
It would be an issue for the beneficiary of Tulsa to deal with.
So they would assume the bond?
I'm sure, well, it's a loan.
They would assume responsibility for the loan?
In the termination of the trust, all the assets of the trust would be sold, and they, as beneficiaries, would, for the Eastern Division, would have to, it has no reflection on the Western Division at all.
I just want to make sure that we're not doing anything today that would bind us in terms of future decision-making as to opting in or out of EMT.
Regardless of who provides your ambulance service in either division, you have to have appropriate clinical and operational areas, and this is really needed for that continuance.
But it's the sole responsibility of the Eastern Division and the city of Tulsa?
This is correct.
Any other questions for Steve? This was approved by the trustees of the, of the trust. We have a motion. Second. Please cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you, Steve.
Also, there's a vote on emergency on that? No?
It's just a resolution.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, next item is a resolution, request for salary continuance.
He meets the criteria, and we recommend approval.
Motion is second, please cast your votes, and it's so done. Do we need to have a motion to strike item K? Okay? Item K, okay? We don't, do not need to go into executive session, entertain a motion to strike.
Motion to strike.
Second. The item is struck. Item 9L, claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here to speak to any item under claims for denial? Seeing none? We have a motion to approve. Second. Please cast your votes, and they are denied. Next are claims for approval. Anyone here wishing to speak to any item under claims for approval? Seeing none?
No.
We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes, and it is done. Next, items for council. We have a resolution appointing James and Tolson as municipal judges, July 1, 2015 through July 1, 2017, recommended by the Judiciary Committee. Pete, would you like to speak on this at all?
It's the process that we initiated a year or so ago where we're approving, where we staggered the terms of the judges. These are the two that had, that come up this time. They've done a good job. We have been a great deal of improvement on the, in the, at the municipal court system over the last year or so. And I, Judge James has done an excellent job. I tell you, I, I, once in a while, you get an undeserved reward for serving in public office, and Judge James is that reward that I've had over the last year. She's just been wonderful, and it's, it's really solved a lot of problems that were there, and I wholeheartedly moved the resolution.
A motion is second?
I have a question. Most of our appointments and contracts are from July 1 to June 30, but all of these say June 1 to June 1. Is there a reason for that? I mean, is there kind of an overlap? Or what are the, what are the reasons?
I'm sure that's a big question.
It says July 1, beginning July 1 and ending July 1. So, I mean, it's going to end at 12:00 a.m. on July 1. So effectively, it ends at the- Oh, okay. Yeah. It's basically the same. Okay, thanks.
We have a motion. We do, and a second. Second. Please cast your votes, and the item is approved. Next item is to designate Judge James as the presiding judge.
I probably should have saved my comments for this one, but I'll save them again. She's done, she does a great job, and I move the resolution.
We have a motion and a second. Please cast your vote, and she is now the presiding judge. Resolution designating Fred Austin as vice-presiding judge.
If I don't say, if I don't say something nice about Fred, I'm going to be in trouble, probably. I've known Fred for a long time. I move for approval.
We'll take that as a nice, we have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes, and it is so done. Compensation benefits for the position of municipal judge, presiding judge, and vice-presiding judge to be effective July 1, 2015. No motion?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Please cast your votes, and it is approved. Resolution approving travel expenses for Councilman McAtee and Councilman Pettis to attend the National League of Cities. We have a motion? Is there a second? Second. Please cast your votes, and it is so approved. And now we have a resolution also approving travel expenses for Councilman Pettis to attend the Neighborhood Works America Comeback Community Seminar in New Orleans. Motion is second. Please cast your votes, and it is so approved. Items from council. Start with James. Ed?
I do need help from city staff, Jim, municipal councillor's office. There's a problem that's kind of plagued me for years in Ward 2. It's throughout the ward, but specifically along Western. Western Avenue, between, say, 36th and 63rd, we've put $2 million of fund balance dollars in there to kind of drive development along the street. So the problem that I'm having repeatedly is businesses wanting to buy R1 residential homes, demolish them, and then use them for parking, for surface-level parking. And if you remember, Chesapeake did that, and we had the case where they bought a house, they demolished it. They wanted to upzone to incorporate that into a surface-level parking, and the council voted against that, upzoning. We've had numerous other businesses which have either wanted to do the same thing or have actually done the same thing. They've bought homes, they've demolished them, and now they're effectively using them as parking. I have complaints from constituents, one in particular who's very vocal, who has a employee who was ticketed by us for parking on their yard and got a fine, and said they went down, and there's 130 other people in court, I guess. But on, on any given day, you've got a business along Western that has demolished a home and then has all this parking on the yard, and we're not ticketing them. So their contention, and I really don't have a good answer for them, is that there's a discrepancy between our ticketing residential and commercial entities for parking cars on their yard, which I don't have, I don't have an answer for that. It seems like we either need to ticket everyone or not ticket.
Well, if it's an approved parking space, a paved parking space, we don't-
It's not paved. They just demolished the home, and they're parking on the yard.
Then they can't park there.
But they've been doing it, and people have repeated, the neighborhood has had multiple meetings. They've come to our Action Center multiple times. They've complained multiple times, and we're not, we're not doing anything. I've got other businesses on, on Western that are looking to buy homes and demolish them. I've got a school, Westminster School, which has indicated that they now want to demolish a home that's next to their surface parking lot. They bought the home, now they, they want to demolish it. So now I've got Douglas Edgemere Neighborhood, which is very upset because Westminster School and the church combined have demolished probably a couple dozen homes. And now Westminster has, their, the president of their board has indicated a desire to purchase more homes to develop like a buffer between the school and the neighborhood. And if that involves more demolitions of homes, I mean, these are homes, this home is right next to Douglas Park. I mean, it's a beautiful, it couldn't be better for the neighborhood, and now it's going to be, apparently, there's consideration given to demolishing it. The problem I see, one problem besides consistency in writing tickets, is that there's no public process for demolition of homes. You can buy a home, you just apply for a permit, there's no public process, and then you demolish the home. And then the, the home is demolished, and then they come to us, like Chesapeake did, or like this other business, this cleaners, dry cleaners is doing, or the drum room wants to do the same thing behind theirs. They demolish the, the home, and then they come to us, and they say, "Well, de facto, it's a parking lot, you should upzone because there is no house there, and we need it for parking," and et cetera. It seems to me there needs to be a public process before you demolish the home, when you apply for the permit, that there should be some kind of notification to the neighborhood. I mean, what if this school engages in mass demolitions of homes? There's no, there's no public process, there's no, nothing. You just apply for a permit, you get it, and you demolish the home. And then you have a discussion about whether you can, you can extend to your surface parking lot. I'm just, I'm throwing it out there because it's really, it's kind, it's really-
You throw on terrible things here. Let's see, I'm taking from the top. In my mind, the parking enforcement is pretty clear. If it's paved parking, we don't enforce whether it's residential or a commercial parking lot. If it's unpaved, we do enforce, and if there, and there may be some instances where people aren't happy with, with us, or we're not doing enough, but we generally do that, well, we do it proactively, we do it, we do it on complaint basis. A lot of it's complaint basis, we go forward with that.
But so you could, you could demol, you could buy an R1 lot, demolish the home, pave it, and then have a surface parking lot there?
I don't think you can, that wouldn't be a proper-
I don't know whether Bob's still back there, because I don't specifically know the answer to this, but I believe you can't just take an R1 zone property and demolish the structure and then use that for commercial parking, for, say, a commercial business next door. I think it has to be rezoned for that.
So it's more than just whether it's paved or not paved?
Right. Well, it would still have to be paved too.
Yeah, it has to be paved too, but-
Thank God, Bob Keener's here, and he can answer all our questions. Come to Marines. Bob, if you have a commercial, if you have a residential house next to a commercial property, and you tear that down, you got to get a permit, you've got to get a permit for the parking lot, and it's going to have to be rezoned, right?
Yes. Now, there are uses in residential, like a church, where they could pave a residentially zoned property, but not a commercial-
Because a church can be in an R1.
Right.
And a sun reuse such as parking for a church could be in R1s. Churches are different than a business.
Okay.
Now, there may be an issue about when a property is, the house is demolished and someone parks on the property without the owner's permission. You know, theoretically, we should be issuing a ticket to the owner who's allowing that, and that could be part of the confusion. You know, I need to talk to Charles about, you know, that, you know, that area on Western that you're talking about, but-
I need help. I mean, the Helm Farm Neighborhood, I mean, they're, they believe that we're being, that there's a discrepancy in level of enforcement, and, and I don't have an answer for them, and I just need help, whether we need to have a meeting or whether we need to come up with a policy. But I, I think they make a good argument. I think when you do a Google Earth satellite photo of that particular property, it shows a bunch of commercial parking there. It's, it's basically happening every day, Monday through Friday, and people in the neighborhood apparently are getting ticketed for parking on their yard, so I just need help.
We, we track every ticket we write and take pictures, so I can, I'll just get with Charles and talk about it, and then-
Okay. Thank you.
Pete?
One of the unexpected consequences of mixed-use development, I would think, perhaps. Councilwoman Sager and I discussed this week about the possibility of reconvening the committee that we had when we realigned the wards. Just from the standpoint of taking a look at it, I have some concerns about the way the ward lines are drawn, and I think she has some also, and we thought, if we could ask the mayor's office perhaps to, it, it, the, the problem of making it just a small committee is that, to, when you realign the wards, you affect everybody. And maybe we could do it as a committee, the whole, if the mayor saw fit, but with a small working group that would, but have the meetings open to everybody while we're looking at various scenarios. If, when the mayor returns, we could ask him, I think that committee may still, may still exist, but there are just a number of things, a number of things that occurred, I think, over the last year or two that make that pertinent, I think, now. I get a lot of push from, from my constituents, especially those in the, in the urban area, and I'm sure that others of us have similar situations, and I'd just like to take another look at it. So, could pass that on to the mayor when he comes back.
Thank you, Mr. White. Meg?
A couple of things. Thank you, Pete. Pete and I did talk about this, and I think when we left it last time, I'm not in favor of expanding the number of wards, per se, but I, I am interested in taking a look again at kind of how they might look. I certainly was discouraged in the last round of elections with low turnout, and maybe there's a way that we could make some improvement in that. So I want to congratulate Downtown Oklahoma City Incorporated for a fantastic D. A. McGee Awards. It was a really special night celebrating great, three great folks, serving Oklahoma City and particularly serving downtown. It was wonderful. And in Ward 2, there was a wonderful farmer's market on Sunday north of 23rd Street on Walker. Uptown 23rd did a great job. I think they anticipated they were going to have seven booths. They had 21. Tons of folks had, all the produce was sold out by 12:30. They had a petting zoo for kids with rabbits and pigs, and it was just a really fun, fun time. So, great job, and I think they're planning on doing that every, the last Sunday of the month, between 11:00 and 4:00, I think, on Walker, just north of 23rd Street.
John?
Just briefly, three things. Early last week, I started getting a lot of calls and emails on a road project between 164th and 178th on Western, and I wanted to thank everybody that took the time to call, to email me, to text me, to identify a problem that needed to be addressed. Secondly, I want to say that I was most impressed with city staff. I went out there and drove it. I know numerous other people that went out and drove it, including Mr. Couch, and there was a quick response. The contractor was working Saturday on the project to try to improve it. Third, I'd like to tell everyone that called, and everybody that texted, and everybody that emailed, to please keep calling me if this problem isn't solved quickly, and I'll stay on top of it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mark. A couple of items from Ward 3 I'd like to just mention. Last Saturday, the Windsor Forest Neighborhood Association had a picnic at Harlow Park. I'd like to congratulate Doug Cooper and the park staff, Jim. That little park has done an excellent job. They've got some new playground equipment out there for the little kids. There's a walking track that was, been approved and put in for people that wanted to walk, and then there was also a number of older folks playing soccer out there. Just a great use of a, of a neighborhood park. And I'd like to congratulate Jeanette Zerp, the president of the Musquey-Pennington Association, who fulfilled so admirably her position over the last several years and is now moving on. We had a great meeting at the Buchanan School. We were also able to recognize Principal Kaufman, who's retiring from the Oklahoma City Public School District after over 30 years of service, and he gave a very excellent report on the positive impact, the great expectations it had over the character development of the children in his school. So with that, next up is city manager reports.
There is not a city, or a sales staff report listed, but it was in your packet. And then the city clerk did put an item out later to add it, so if I can address that at this point in time. It was a pretty good month for us in May. It was up 1.7% over target and 1.8% over last year, but I think the significant number, if you take a look at it, is for the year-to-date, we're within 0.1% of our, of our target, and so that, that's, you know, with the volatile economy out there, I'm very pleased that we're hanging in there that tight, so that's the good news. We have to answer any questions?
Can I follow, you, we were talking about, can I just follow up on the demolition? So right now, if an entity wants to engage in, in multiple home demolitions, there's, there's nothing other than applying for the permit, there's no public process for that?
I think that's correct.
That is correct.
And if you wanted to change that, you, you would, if you wanted to provide notification and some kind of public process that would require city ordinance, or how would you-
Yes. You would probably have to put something in the zoning code that would basically require some type of special approval to demolish an R1 house, and you'd have to provide criteria, and either staff or some entity would have to review whether the criteria are met and then approve it. It would be a very complicated process.
You know, you do need a permit in any historic neighborhood. You have to have a certificate of approval-
Right, right.
For residential or commercial building in any of our designated-
And how does that, I mean, this wouldn't apply to those necessarily, but how does that process work?
Well, if you, so you live in Heritage Hills, and you want to demolish your garage to rebuild it, you have to go to the H.P. Commission-
Okay.
-and ask for a certificate of appropriateness.
And the H, and then that's the final, you have a public hearing?
And then that's, that's the body. Now, there is an appeal process to, I think, to the Board of Adjustment.
HPC thoroughly looks at each one of those projects, and then, or it can be appealed to the Board of Adjustment.
And we actually see that on our agendas from time to time. If somebody wants to demolish, if we have a dilapidated structure on our agenda, we'll get a separate memo from our Historic Preservation Officer saying this property significantly contributes to the fabric of the neighborhood, or-
Right.
I don't think I've ever seen one that said it didn't, but typically, you know, they will opine on the piece of property.
So there, there's precedent for it within the historic neighborhoods, but just not in the rest of the city?
And I think that's part of the designation.
Yeah. Moving along, thank you.
It's really nice having a Board of Adjustment expert with us now on the city council. That's what a benefit.
Citizens to be heard, Randy Aldridge. Is Randy here? If you would, give your name and address, and then address the council.
Randy Aldridge, 7408 Northwest 84th Street. Good morning. What I'm here about is this ordinance here, particularly Paragraph H, and I just wanted to make sure the- And I just wanted to make sure the council knew what they were getting when they did this. The mandatory water use and restrictions in emergency, the whole thing's great until you come to Paragraph H, which, if you'll go another page or two here, has to do with, right there, with installing an extra valve in the city right-of-way. That is my big concern. You'll show a picture here. I'm a home builder, and this is what you're getting out in the field. No, there's no rules or regulations for what kind of meter can you put there? The valve itself, there's nothing that specifies that. So you have a ball valve there that can be turned off but cannot be locked. So it's put there so that if someone is caught watering on the wrong day, they can come by and turn it off. And then, of course, the homeowner can turn around, reach down there, turn it right back on. So it really doesn't do anything. So my biggest concern, besides how it looks, is in five years, if you have a problem with your meter, the city does, they've got to deal with this. They got to dig around it, they got to probably repair it, another cost to the city. So back to the front page, if you will. If you're doing where the backflow is actually in the house, this is for sprinkler systems, of course. It's an additional cost to the consumer to do this, to add this loop that goes back in, to add this valve. So the main reason I'm here is I really think that the valve doesn't serve any purpose, except for it to be in the way of the city in the future and the look that you're getting. So either one or two things needs to be done, really. In my opinion, is strike Paragraph H completely because it's not needed. It, it's not a locking valve, it doesn't do anything. You have a locking valve, if someone, you know, violates the ordinance, you got a meter there with a lock on it. But if you keep going to the, that one there just shows, about two weeks after that, that one was completely covered. They couldn't find it anyways. Next, last page, please. There is, from the city, exactly what they've done since this was passed, two years ago, basically, to the month almost. So it's really not a very big problem anyways. I think most people do follow the water rationing that we have permanent in place. So if everybody's okay with those pictures I showed you of what they're, what new construction is getting, then I guess it's okay, but I think it's going to be a problem for the city.
Thank you, Randy, for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you very much.
Next up, a citizen to be heard, Harry Burns, Jr. If you would, please, sir, give your name and address and address the council. Try to limit your comments to three minutes, if you would.
Yes, sir. My name is Harry Burns, Jr., 1622 Northwest 3rd Street. My concerns are the influx of the youth. My heart was touched by a story I heard from Daddy Oklahoman about two days ago, reading it, of course, sir, and, and ladies, concerning how the children are sacrificing themselves here. They could be paying taxpayers. They're moving to all my blank houses. Everyone I close down, they're moving into them. I come over there, and I got four or five new kids. And they're not just children. Now, he's talking about between 18, 21, 23. What I've done is I've started taking in the, the ones that are capable, that want to do something for themselves, so that I can encourage them. And I want to use that. I want to give them jobs. I want to turn them into taxpayers instead of being a negligence upon the city. I want to work on it. And you gave me an offer. Thank you for offering this to me, that I may prioritize upon helping these children. I mean, they're youth, they're young adults, but they're still adults. I thank you for doing a good job for me, helping me, assisting me, because ain't no one else helping. Mom's dead, I'm left. I notice all the places around town are shutting down. Everybody's been running towards me now. Don't worry about it. I play, I got $5,000 table saws. I got all kind of equipment. When my mother did upholstery work, we worked for, we do airplanes, boats, and cars, motorcycles, whatever it is. We won at the fairgrounds, she sold fire all the way through the car. I can teach these children something that gives them abilities, a skill that will give them knowledge and propel them to the future, where they're not just taxpayers, but they're better people already, citizens. That's what we need, citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good day.
Thank you for coming down. Any other citizens to be heard? That concludes our agenda. We are adjourned.